Hello, I'm Rima Amin and I'm a reporter at Chalk Beach, Chicago. Welcome to our inaugural School Board Candidate Forums. These are conversations with the people running in Chicago's historic first school board elections. And welcome to anyone tuning in live at our YouTube channel. If you have questions for the candidates today, please type them into the comments and we will do our best to get to them. We are very happy to welcome the many candidates of District 4. Kimberly Brown is a marketing professional, adjunct professor at Roosevelt University and Lake Forest Graduate School of Management, and founder of a nonprofit that was focused on providing leadership skills to young adults. She is also the mother of two children, one of whom is enrolled at her neighborhood school, Nettleworth. Andrew Davis is the leader of a nonprofit focused on making teaching degrees more accessible and affordable, and is a parent of a child in CPS. He at one time owned a brokerage firm and oversaw the Illinois Student Assistance Commission, a state agency which provides information and financial aid to Illinois students who are bound for college. Thomas Day is a lecturer at the Harris School of Public Policy at the University of Chicago. He's also a CPS dad and an occasional CPS substitute teacher. He's also the co-founder of Illinois Veterans for Change, a political action group that helps military veterans run for public office. Before all of those roles, Day was a one-time journalist and public information officer for the Army, having been deployed to the Middle East. Carmen Giosa is an adjunct professor at National Lewis University, former CPS teacher and former central office administrator, who focused on academic and social emotional interventions for students with high needs. She is the chair of the local school council at Abraham Lincoln Elementary School, where her two children are enrolled. Ellen Rosenfeld is currently a community and family engagement specialist at Chicago Public Schools. She is a former teacher and local school council chairwoman for her neighborhood school, Ball Elementary. Her four children have gone through CPS schools. And finally, we have Karen Zachor, who is a retired teacher who taught in CPS for 28 years. She helped found Uplift Community High School, where she also taught. Zachor is also a longtime community organizer who advocated for many issues, including full-day kindergarten, stopping school closures, and starting an elected school board, which is a great segue into our forum. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for being here. We're going to get into a lot of serious topics today, but we're going to start light and open with an icebreaker. So if we can start with you, Ellen, and then go this way, what was your favorite and least favorite subject in school?
Okay, so I'm one of those kids that loves school, just always loved school, always wanted to be a teacher. My favorite subject was probably history, lessons learned from the past that inform what happens in the future. I was always fascinated by that. Least favorite, maybe sciences. I was never very good at them, but I kept trying.
Thomas?
I suppose social studies was probably my, the class, the subject I enjoyed the most. Math, the least, but don't let that confuse you, math is important.
Carmen?
Favorite subject was, actually, computer science. I love the way that math was taught, in that very visual kind of logical way of doing the flow charts, if you remember back in the day. Least favorite, that's really hard because I did love school too, least favorite was probably calc, actually, I have to say, calculus class.
We've been getting a lot of math answers just in all of these forums. Kim?
Favorite, it's probably English. I had a couple of really good English teachers, especially in high school. Least favorite, very vividly, gym class, elementary school, huge fear of missing the kickball and just wiping out, never happened, massive fear. So gym, elementary school, gym class.
I think that would be my answer, too, I have to be honest.
And I played sports. I just really...
A lot of competitiveness. Yes. Karen?
Okay, I'll be different and say that my favorite subject in elementary school was math, just for the precision of it, I guess, for the definite answers, and in high school, probably music, and that's because my teachers had such passion for the subject. Least favorite throughout would unfortunately be social studies, which I do love in principal, but in school, it was very whitewashed curriculum, very much portrayed this country as well. We had a few problems in the past, but they've all been solved now, and even as a kid, I knew that was wrong.
And finally, Andrew?
I had very good teachers in both high school and college, Shakespeare class, and that was probably my favorite of all time. I actually enjoyed calculus and geometry, not algebra, and sixth grade French was the worst.
Okay, wow, that's a different answer. Okay, so we're going to open with kind of some quick rapid-fire questions about the recent news around CPS. So it's going to be two questions, and I'm going to ask each of you rapid-fire yes or no. Yes, these are very hard questions to answer yes or no with, you might find, but we will give you each 30 seconds afterwards to explain your answers to both, okay? So I'm going to start this time with you, Andrew. Yes or no, would you keep Pedro Martinez in the role of CPS CEO?
Enthusiastic, yes.
And yes or no, do you support taking out a high-interest loan to cover operating costs?
Absolutely not.
Karen, yes or no, would you keep Pedro Martinez? Actually, you know what, I'm going to say the question and have you all answer, and then we'll... Yes or no, would you keep Pedro Martinez in the role of CPS CEO?
I have to say, I'm determined.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thomas?
Emphatically, yes.
Okay. Yes or no, and we'll start with Karen, since I had you answer already, do you support taking out a high-interest loan to cover operating costs?
I'm determined.
Kimberly?
No.
Carmen?
No.
No.
Okay, so let's start with the question about the CEO. In 30 seconds or less, Andrew, can you explain why your answer is yes?
Yes. For starters, turnover is detrimental to progress in any sort of an organization, but I think particularly in school, and to call for the resignation of the, or head-on-the-stick of the head of the schools on the first day of school was just the height of your responsibility. Beyond that, though, I think Pedro's done a good job, and we are making progress in CPS. There's a lot of good things going on there, there's a long ways to go, but I think he's proven himself to be up for the challenge.
Karen?
I do not want to be a board member who bases my decisions about anything on what I read in the paper. I have to assume that there is a job description with performance standards and descriptors of performance levels, and that evidence is required to make a decision. I'm not privy to any of that information, so that would lead me to say that I really don't know. I will say that Martinez comes from the broad school of thought, which is corporate school reform, pro charter, and opposed to the equity that I stand for.
Kimberly?
Yeah. I'm a yes right now, because of what we talked about. It's the Board of Education's job as leaders to manage leaders, and it is not constructive nor mature for anyone to be doing this to an executive in the middle of their term. We need to be working with and managing our leaders and really helping them grow in support. That is not a yes forever, that is a yes right now. Stable leadership is one of the three indicators of success in a school. And having worked with a lot of executive leaders and been one myself, we want to continue to make this a job that people want to apply for in the future.
Okay, Carmen?
Yes, I've had the pleasure of working with CEO Martinez on a parent leadership council that he, that we worked together on, maybe a year, year and a half. He is steadfast and dedicated to our parents and to the students in Chicago Public. He really wants parents to be the biggest advocates and understand everything about Chicago Public Schools. But from a performance standpoint, like Karen mentioned, we don't know what that evaluation is like, and public performance evaluations are not cool.
Thomas?
CPS has a $505 million budget deficit, is managing $3 billion in urgent capital repairs. We spent about $800 million last year just to service long-term debt. We are servicing about $7.5 billion. These are very scary numbers, and these are very scary times. What the mayor is trying to do is to force out Mr. Martinez to make a bad situation extraordinarily worse.
Okay, Ellen?
Forcing out the CEO of CPS during budget season and contract negotiations is a disservice to all of us that live in Chicago. What CPS communities are begging for is stability. What CPS families are begging for is stability, and a short-term, high-interest loan is exactly what they're not asking for.
And Ellen, we'll start with you on the question. You answered the loan one, so we'll have you answer the CPS question about why, and then 30 seconds for each of you to answer, explain your, answer to the question about the loan. So Ellen, about the CEO, if you could explain your answer.
Yeah, so I think, I'm sorry, I answered the first one, but I think that taking out a short-term, high-interest loan right now is not what our community is, not only is it not what they're asking for, but it's a disservice to all of those that live in Chicago. Everybody in Chicago just wants a stable Chicago Public Schools that we can count on, and that's what we're hoping to achieve.
Thomas?
The Chicago Public School system is already the nation's largest junk bond issuer. With this crazy $300 million payday loan that is proposed, we really risk the very credit of our public school system. Note that we max out property taxes every single year, and we're told there's nothing we can do about it. Let me be very clear to everybody watching at home, we do not need to max out property taxes every single year. That we are doing so is a product of woeful financial mismanagement.
Okay, Carmen?
I think asking the city to take on this huge debt without actually knowing what CPS's budget looks like, I'd like to see an accounting log, because I think it's a disservice to our residents to have this short-sighted loan where we don't even know where efficiencies could be found in the current budget.
Kimberly?
Yeah. I agree with my neighbors here. I think to add into it, it's not that anyone in this city doesn't want to fund our public schools. We need to show that we can manage budget, that we have. A high-interest loan where the fourth-largest school district in the country is crazy, we need to show we can use and be accountable for what we have, and that is how we're going to get appropriate and sustainable increase in resources going forward.
Karen?
Well, I think the loan sounds like a terrible idea, but perhaps all the options out there right now are not good options, and so I think it would be our responsibility to look among the choices, consult with experts, and each other on the board, to determine which of the bad options is the least bad, I guess, and which will yield the best results. So that was why my answer was unconfirmed or undetermined.
Okay, and finally, Andrew?
Borrowing to meet operating expenses is never a good idea. It doesn't matter whether you're government or a household or anything else. The one exception to that is probably if you know that there is a source of repayment that's coming, if you know that you're about to receive the bequest from your rich uncle or whatever, maybe some short-term borrowing makes some sense. In this situation, there's no reason to think Governor Pritzker has made it clear and that legislators that the solution is not in Springfield, the money's not coming forth, and so I think to borrow to meet operating expenses is inexcusably irresponsible.
Okay, and just to clarify to our viewers, the high-interest loan is not a formal proposal that's been brought before, you know, the now-former board or the current board. It is something that, you know, we've reported is potentially on the table and isn't asked from City Hall. Okay, let's move on to questions about, a question about CPS leadership, and Kimberly, we'll start with you. And, you know, I'll go this way and then swing back around this way. What qualities, and this will be two minutes each, what qualities or experience would you like to see any CPS CEO have?
So, an innovative mindset that goes outside of what CPS has always done. We need a little bit of humility in our city and district. We are in an amazing state surrounded by amazing sister districts, in a country where a lot of districts have different bright spots, and we need to start thinking, I like to hearken back to when we rebuilt from the Chicago Fire, right? We need leaders who can be innovative, big innovations, small iterative innovations, an open growth mindset that is accountable to the young people in our school system, not politically elected, unions, any other organization that is not the students in the classroom. And so I want a leader that has the bravery to stand up and do their job, the experience to run a district that's complex as ours, the ability to work with all the different shareholders and stakeholders collaboratively, the understanding of how to work up and work down, but also an innovative mindset. There are so many ways that we can repurpose and reuse the way we're thinking through reorganizing the way that our departments are held, bringing data back in and actually putting it back into the community in a new way. There is a future that we're looking towards, there's a fortify and explore mindset. I want a CEO that can inspire and lead with that innovative growth mindset, and that takes a lot of experience, but there are amazing leaders out there that can do that. Thank you.
Carmen?
A principle that we, that we talk a lot about in education is, we want our teachers to backward map their lessons. We need to know what the end is and then teach that way, because if we don't know where we're going, then I'm not too sure we're going to lead our students to the right, meeting the right standards or filling the right skill gaps. We need a CEO or superintendent that has the vision to bring everybody on board and agree what the end result is. The end result must be improving student outcomes and student performance. Without clearly always stating that mission and that statement, I think we're losing out on all these agendas or the politicalness that's happening, newspapers, press, anywhere you can see. But again, it's that focus on, if it's about student outcomes and it's about student performance, all the work should lead backwards from there. And that means, what does it mean for a school to do that? What does it mean for the network to do that? What does it mean for parents to do that at home? Something that CEO Martinez has talked a lot about is that homeschool connection, and a lot of times, I think we forget to include the family in that conversation, because it's about the rich cultural diversity that our students have experienced at home with their families, and how that replays and doesn't replay in the classroom, that we are denying access to education to many of our students.
Thomas?
Well, Ms. Brown mentions the Chicago Fire. In my judgment, we are confronting right now one of the great crises that our city has ever faced, not just this debt crisis that we're confronted with the Chicago Public School System, but also the city as well. We need to pause and reflect on how we got here. We have experienced, in the last 10 years, in my judgment, an extraordinary shift in our political environment here in Chicago. It really created what I call a culture of financial lunacy. So when we look at the CEO and the leadership of the Chicago Public School System, we have to have people who can, who understand the challenges that we face. The Chicago Public School System, since the backlash of, from the 50 closing, the closing of the 50 schools, has really built itself into quite a financial hole. As I say, I think a lot of folks watching this, and I know everybody here knows well, we have one school with 4% enrollment. We have 11 other high schools that are, 80% or more empty. No logical person could tell me that we need to be maxing out property taxes to the fullest extent allowed by Illinois state law to fund these empty schools, and not just that they're empty, but they're underperforming, they're segregated, they are nearly nine decades old on average. We need leadership that recognizes the challenges that we faced, we face here with the Chicago Public School System, and the courage to grab some of the political third rails that we have been avoiding for some time, and solve challenges with a focus on results.
Okay, Ellen?
Characteristics of a good CEO for Chicago Public Schools would first start with integrity. We need a CEO that has integrity, knows what he or she stands for, and sticks to that throughout the process. In addition to that, we need a CEO that has good financial management skills. It's a $10 billion budget, you have to be able to know what you're talking about there. Strong collaboration skills, there are so many stakeholders in Chicago Public Schools. We have community organizations, we have teachers, we have parents, you know, we have students, and everybody has to work together. So we need to find a CEO that's able to work together with all of those people, keeping their eye on our clients, which are the students. I think it's important to have a CEO that has experience in Chicago. We're a unique system, we are a unique and fantastic city, and we need to have a CEO that understands the way that Chicago works.
Thank you. Okay, Karen?
So I think the first characteristic in my mind would be experience. I would like a CEO that has some experience actually teaching on some level, and I would also like them to have some experience running something very large. Since Chicago is a large and complex system, I don't think I would want someone who, this is their first job. I think a second thing I would want them to have is a commitment to equity. I don't think, given the amount of inequity in CPS that's just baked into the system, that we are going to be able to improve student outcomes if we don't make some significant steps towards more equitably funding schools and ensuring that all schools are well-resourced and high-quality. I want to agree with Kim about the idea of being innovative. I really want a CEO who can think outside the box, because if we just keep doing things the way we've always done them, we will get what we always got, and we absolutely need that person to have way more creative ideas. And then, as someone who was just in the classroom last year, I want a CEO who is going to spend some time investigating in some way whether going themselves or sending people to go and bring back information, more investigation about what's happening in schools and classrooms, because I'll just say that we, as classroom teachers, did not feel like CPS had a clue about what we needed in our classrooms.
Thank you. And finally, Andrew?
I think the most important thing for CEO of CPS is someone who can explain and sell a vision of a school system where every student is coming out of it educated, literate, numerate. And I think in creating that vision, the next thing to do is to, is to both sell it to the city and to all the different constituencies, but most importantly, to the team that the, that CEO leads at CPS, to make sure that they are there and ready to support the principals and the teachers that are actually getting the work done in the school. Following up behind that ability to have a vision and communicate that mission, I think integrity is absolutely essential. There's no doubt, given the size of our budget and the history of our city, that there's any number of things going on with money that shouldn't, and misuses of it, shenanigans, funky stuff, whatever you want to call it, this is Chicago, and you can be sure it's going on. And I think having a CEO who's willing to stand up to it and tell various folks who put in their usual calls that they're not getting their money this time, it's not happening.
Okay, let's move on to the budget, and these will also be two minutes each, and I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with Carmen, and we can, we can go this way. Okay. In its most recent budget, Chicago Public Schools projected more than a $500 million deficit, which it has closed, but it's projecting even bigger deficits in the out years. That's before any added cost related to the teachers' and principals' contract. There's also a pension payment that the city wants CPS to pay that is not in the budget right now. How would you balance Chicago Public Schools' nearly $10 billion budget? And again, this is two minutes each, and Carmen, we'll start with you.
Wow, I wish I could tell everybody the secret that I've been holding. And the secret, City of Chicago, is that we need a lot more information, and we need to tap into the experts. I am not, as I said, calc was not my class. Finance, we have the most amazing minds here in the city, and I know CPS does as well, and I know the City of Chicago does. We need to work with them and understand and ask the questions, because to me, when I look at a school budget that I've done at our neighborhood school, I see line item and line item, and I can draw lines, literally. I could draw lines, what the school plan is for our students, to what is in that budget. And to me, that's the type of counting and whiteboarding that I need to see happen before we can make any other considerations, and I know that there's holes in that budget. I know that there's inefficiencies. Could I tell you what they are? I have a guess of what they are, but I guess for the record, I won't let the secret out. However, these are some really tough conversations, and I think making these big, bold statements about closing or reducing or laying off is just ingenuine, disingenuine of me to say, because I don't know what the real story is. And I do need that data, and I do need those accounting spreadsheets, and I do need to plaster them on the wall, and we all need to have a conversation together.
Thank you. Thomas?
So the CPS budget 10 years ago was about $5 billion. If it traced inflation, it would be somewhere in the 8, 8.5 billion dollar range. It is 9.9. We are wasting, and I can very safe in saying, hundreds of millions of dollars in funding for CPS. What have we gotten for all this spending? Quarter of students reading at grade level, 17% of students testing at grade level in math. This is totally unacceptable. Let me tell you first thing what we're not going to do. We do not need to continue raising property taxes to the maximum level allowed by state law. Then we need to do an audit, yes, absolutely. I know that's probably a response of my friends and colleagues here on stage, but let me give you a hint of what's going to be in that audit when we find it. We cannot continue funding empty schools. We have 161 schools that are more than half-empty. This has been brought to you by a spirit of political dysfunction, brought to you by the folks at the core coalition led by Stacey Davis-Gates. I'm out to show how we can, I know how we can, avoid raising the property tax levy to the maximum, and it begins with making some tough choices. I have proposed what I call the Chicago Public Schools Advancement and Modernization Commission. It takes a page from the military's Base Realignment and Closure Commission to establish a commission to look at our inventory of real estate and facilities and schools, and advise the CPS board on an up or down vote which schools we can transition and wind down, with two critical requirements. Number one, we need, before they report to the CPS board, they must establish a plan for what happens with that building afterward. Second, they must assign students to maximize racial integration.
Okay, Ellen?
The billion-dollar question, the budget, I wish I, too, had the secret answer. We have to start with the internal audit. We have, we need transparency. Communities are begging for transparency. We need to hold our district leaders accountable. We have, we serve as so many different types of students in Chicago Public Schools, special needs, bilingual, you know, there's just a variety of stakeholders, a variety of students. We have to see how we're serving them. We have to figure out where is the bloat, what are we wasting money on? We have to look at the procurement side of it, we have to look at our vendors. It's very, this is going to be a 21-person board, so we're going to have to work together, right? No one single idea is going to be the idea that this board takes on, it's just not possible. We have to leverage our relationships, we have to bring down the temperature and focus on the students. So it's going to take a board to get in there, look at where we're spending the money, where is the bloat, and then do the work to make sure that we're funding all the right programs. It's an equity issue, it's just a really big issue that's going to take some time.
Okay, I think we're, let's, let's go to, oh yeah, actually, you're right, let's go this way. Andrew, go ahead.
I think there is an answer, and it's, it's simple, although not easy to implement, but the taxpayers of the City of Chicago have been getting a raw deal for a long time, and every other school district in the state, the State of Illinois, Springfield, pays for the teacher pensions. The teacher retirement system covers every other district except Chicago. So in Winnetka, Kettleworth, Nutria, Oak Park, Peoria, Decatur, you name it, the State of Illinois is paying for the teacher pensions. At the third public negotiation session, CPS reported that this year alone, the paying for Chicago teachers' pensions- for Chicago teachers' pensions was going to cost CPS $662 million. So in a budget that seems to be the half-billion number deficit is the one that gets tossed around, to find that there's $662 million that I maintain are being unfairly foisted on the Chicago taxpayers that should be the responsibility of the state, that would solve that deficit, which doesn't mean that we don't need an audit and ferreting out of all the inefficiencies and misspending that undoubtedly we all agree is going on. But the fact is that this misappropriation, if you will, of Chicago taxpayers' money has got to come to an end. Now, it makes a lot of sense, I think, and certainly, most people would say, yeah, if we get the state to pay for it, who could be opposed to that? Well, the answer is, the Chicago Teachers Union is opposed to it. And at that same meeting, Jackson Potter said that "any change to the governance," his words were, "of the Chicago Teachers Pension Fund would be anathema to the CTU." Well, it might be anathema to them, but I think $600 million of additional spending to improve our schools and to keep our neighborhoods strong and to push that accomplishment of reading from 25% to the 75%, 85%, 95% it ought to be, I don't think that's anathema. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Karen?
So I think also, first of all, do that audit, find where the waste is, and cut waste. That seems the obvious first step. I do think that there's money to be had at every level. So at the federal level, there's monies available for different kinds of green renovations, and we know that a lot of our schools need renovations. That would be money that we could take advantage of perhaps almost immediately. On a longer-term basis, idea is way below paying for what was agreed they would pay for for students with disabilities. And so, working with our legislators to press for that to be more fully funded would be a source of income at the federal level. At the state level, yep, picking up the pension costs would be a great step. And also, the fact that the state says they owe CPS $1.1 billion, it's not really fair for current kindergarteners to wait until they're graduated for us to have all the money, since we need it now. And it's also the case that 84% of the school districts in Illinois are underfunded. So I think that we build a coalition, a larger coalition in Chicago, so include the business, community, parents, unions, elected officials, and unite with these other communities around the state and press upon the state that, you know, a budget is a moral document. It reflects our priorities. Our children should absolutely be the number-one priority. And then, at the city level, I think we could get money from TIFs. So TIFs were meant to be used in blighted areas for development, not encouraged by the market, but they're frequently being used to enrich developers. So I think shut down those TIFs, that money would go back to the taxing bodies, and that would be a lot of money for CPS.
Thank you. And finally, Kimberly.
All right. Wonderful. You threw in the TIF, which kind of changed my answer a little bit. I don't, and I'm not disagreeing with it, but that's a very, like, there's a lot of things in there. I generally agree with everything that my neighbors, colleagues, co-candidates are saying. So I'm going to take a yes-and approach for anyone who's done the Second City training. There's an amazing book called The Fearless Organization. And I truly believe, and we have found, that most people are very rational thinkers, and these are common-sense ideas. And yet, we're still where we are. So typically, large organizations like this, and I have been a leader at a lot of large dysfunctional organizations that are slow, stodgy, and sometimes on the decline, the culture of that organization can stop common-sense ideas from going into action. So it's a yes-and. If we don't address the culture issues within CPS, we are not going to have any of this happen. If someone is scared to have an innovative idea, if someone feels like not spending money is going to be a loss because they're never going to get it again, we're not going to be able to be fiscally sound. And those are trends and cultures within organizations. There's a use it or lose it, right? And so, we need to address a growth culture within CPS that is modern. It celebrates successes regardless of if they're spending money or not, and we need to start changing the mindset. CPS, and Karen said, was not built to be successful for today's society. So we have amazing ideas, but if we don't have leaders in place who have done the hard work and have the proven experience to know how ideas die, we are going to be right where we are 10 years from now. So it is, we live in the best city in the world, and we have some of the best minds in the world. And we've done this before. We can look at the organizations. I was at GE. I ran a great department in renewable energy, and I saw the organization around me fall apart. There are things that we can learn, and I read The Fearless Organization. It shows the psychology of how organizations can become brave and embrace these new ideas for success. And if we don't address the culture, we're going to end up with another plate of great ideas that never happen.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to the topic of school choice. And I think this time, we will start with Kimberly. I'm trying to go in order here, and I might be, maybe Thomas? I'm sorry, we're going to start with Thomas. Okay. Thomas? So again, two minutes each to answer this. Yes or no, do you believe any of Chicago Public Schools' admissions policies should change? If yes, what would you like to see changed? And if no, explain why you think the current policies work.
So I can, I'm going to answer yes. Do I then have some time to discuss?
Yes, two minutes.
Okay. So, yes, absolutely. So, look, I agree with Mayor Johnson and Stacey Davis-Gates that we could do better in generating or supporting more diversity, particularly in our selective enrollment schools. Let me be clear, though, I strongly disagree with efforts to squeeze funding for our best-performing and selective enrollment schools, and I especially disagree with efforts to close them. Any school that produced Michelle Obama, as Whitney Young did, a selective enrollment school, should never have their funding squeezed. We need to strengthen these schools. And at the same time, make sure that we're strengthening our neighborhood schools as well. We, it doesn't need to be an either-or kind of thing. We can make sure that all of our neighborhood schools have a librarian, have special ed support. It will, however, take some tough choices about consolidating schools that have been so severely disenrolled.
Thomas, let me, I'm sorry, let me cut in here. So just to stay on topic of the question, are you saying that you support current admissions policies and you wouldn't specifically?
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying that we should look at admissions policies to increase diversity at our selective enrollment schools.
Okay. Sorry, continue.
Look, we are dealing, I was talking about disenrolled schools and the need to consolidate neighborhood schools and make sure that we're providing the services that Ms. Davis-Gates and I agree need to be provided at all of our neighborhood schools. We have lost 200,000 residents in the City of Chicago since the COVID-19 outbreak. We've lost 23% of our K-8 students in the last 10 years, suggesting more enrollment declines are likely to happen in future years. Look, we're losing people, we're also having fewer children as a society. This is a challenge that we are going to be consistently facing into the foreseeable future. We need to make some responsible choices to provide the neighborhood school experience that both I and Stacey Davis-Gates agree we need to deliver.
Okay. Ellen?
The question, the answer to your question is yes, is we do need to look at our admission policies, and we do need to update those policies and change them, right? It's a yes-no question.
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I have had my own kids and worked in and been a part of both neighborhood schools, selective enrollment schools, magnet schools. They serve the needs of all of our kids. As a parent, and the parent voice is so important, you know what's best for your child, and you should have the option to send your kid to the school that serves them best and meets their needs. However, CPS needs to work on making the whole system easier for parents to understand, easier for caregivers to understand, whether that be language, so that all of the options are available in all of the languages. We do programs and classes at parent universities, which I have helped to run on the northwest side of Chicago, where we bring our communities and we bring our parents in so they better understand what this process means. There's words like selective enrollment and magnet and choice and IB, and half of our communities don't even really understand how to get their child to that, how to get their child to the finish line of the school that serves them best. So it's imperative that Chicago Public Schools do better with our messaging, do better with our explanation, and help our parents understand the options available to their kids.
Okay. And just to quickly follow up with you, is there a specific admissions, you're talking about access, is there a specific admissions policy, though, whether it be for magnet selective enrollments, that you would like to see changed?
I would like to see the messaging. I would like to see more people have availability to understand what it takes to get into these schools.
Okay.
And let's level up, you know, let's level up all the schools so that our neighborhood schools help to meet the needs of all of our students.
Thank you. Andrew?
I think that the application process and the selection process for the selective enrollment schools should be changed. So yes, in answer to your basic question. I think that the, one of the changes that I would suggest is that it turns out that the path to selective enrollment schools is a long path, and it starts very, very early on. I think my colleague Karen has spoken about this, I think, at some other meetings. And recently, there's been some press about certain parts of the city and certain places where the chances of a student from that neighborhood and that school ending up in a selective enrollment were on the order of 1%, which is to say, very close to zero. And it's not fair, and it's not right. And so, I think that we need to do a much better job of identifying what the process is and informing parents about it and other educators in the schools, say, oh, here's a student that maybe should be headed down this path, and letting them know in time so that they can actually do so.
Okay. Thank you. Karen?
So I'll answer yes as well. I do think admission policies need to be changed. So regarding that study, I think it was a WBEZ study saying, right, 1% of students in low-income, black and brown neighborhoods were getting seats at the top selective enrollment schools, and that's a very disturbing figure, right? I think we need to ask, well, why is that? And part of it is that in the lower-income communities, a lot of those schools have been disinvested, and so there aren't the resources there that other students have that would allow young people to prepare for the test they have to take to get into those schools. It's often the case that, you know, some families have money to put into test prep and other kinds of programs that get their children ready again for the test they have to take because it's really a very narrow process, right? It's your grades in seventh grade and this test. So everybody doesn't have equal access to those kinds of resources to get ready for the test. So I do think that it's very problematic that we're ending up with the reality of selective enrollment schools serving more wealthy families, and in Chicago, that often means wider families. And so, therefore, we need to make some changes that will hopefully provide more resources to the under-resourced schools, but also make some changes in policies so that we can diversify the schools more right now.
Okay. Thank you. Kimberly?
Wonderful. I mean, yes and again. I think viewers will find we do have a lot of commonality as neighbors in this district. I'm going to have a three-part answer. I think it's going to be three. As an old millennial, the perspective I'll take in this answer is for parents of elementary and people that have not yet been parents yet. So my husband and I lived in the Near West Loop before it had been developed to what it is today, and we looked at the possibility of starting a family, and the only school in the neighborhood was a lottery-based school. And so, we moved because the idea that I could live next door to a school and not make the lottery to get my child there and then be driving all over the city was not something I was ready for, especially when I didn't even know if I could have kids or would end up having kids. So we moved to a local school that was also a magnet. Chicago's public school system is a scaffolding of 100 years of policies. And so, I do think there's an opportunity to unwind it and look with community groups and just basic research to say, is this a user-friendly experience? Does this make sense? So the answer to your question is, yes, we need to look at it. One, from the functionality standpoint, but two, how do we make sure by improving neighborhood schools, we do more blended models potentially? I also have a lot of parents that have talked to me where their children, their two-year-olds were reading at like a second-grade level. That kid should not be in the same class as my first grader, who is not reading at that level, nor my preschooler. So there are schools that are selective enrollment because of the young kids that are testing, which does technically create some systems when we get into high school. But they didn't have an option in the neighborhood school because they would have been in class with second graders, which is not developmentally appropriate. So we do have amazing schools that exist for academically profound young students who need to be in those spaces at a developmentally appropriate level for their bodies and their emotions. So there is a reason why we have this amazing system, but there are ways we can definitely smooth out the edges. The analogy I'll give is, we've been doing additions to a house for 100 years. We probably need to do like a gut rehab, smooth it out, fix the walls. Anyone who has an old Chicago condo knows what I'm talking about. And improve it in common-sense ways, and that will address some admissions policies and common-sense approaches and accessibilities, and really empower our neighborhoods as well as they become more vibrant through an economy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carmen?
And so, Reba, the question is, do we want to, can you repeat it?
Yes, of course. Do you believe that any of Chicago Public Schools' admissions policies should change? If yes, what would you like to see changed? And if no, explain why you think the current policies work.
Okay. So it's timely to ask that question today because every single eighth grader this morning sat for the placement exam to get into selective enrollment or some of the magnet programs. And I have a huge problem with that. I have a huge problem with that because all the kids who are sitting, who took that test this morning, I assure you, did not have the education that they needed to be successful on that test from an equal playing field. If I go back and I ask, if there is an algebra question on that test this morning, how many of our students had access to algebra before they got to the test this morning? It is most likely that they did not. Algebra is something that we teach in eighth grade. If we look at language and reading skills, again, what have we asked of our families and our students and our teachers to be doing it at what age? Talk about developmentally not appropriate is to have a kindergartner reading before they enter a kindergarten classroom. We have some systemic problems in Chicago Public Schools that we keep reinventing every year as we are asking children to sit for a test that they don't feel prepared for, and yet, we've created a mindset that they're, quote-unquote, "not good enough" for our schools, when in fact, we have amazing neighborhood schools. And yet, sometimes, they're frowned upon. And I have a real issue with that as well, having taught in a neighborhood school for many years. All of our children are unique. All of our children have talents in the city. There is a school for everybody. But to ask a child who is maybe the age of 13 to sit for a test when they don't feel that they're prepared for is the worst thing we could possibly do to the city, excuse me, to the students in Chicago. There are pathways, and we need all kids to know that. This is not the end.
Okay. Thank you all. We are moving so quickly, actually, through this. We're going to get to the next topic, which is equity. So I'm going to actually jumble, see how we can tackle this. Let's talk about staffing shortages. Chicago is facing staffing shortages across the district. You will see this with special education teachers and teachers who teach bilingual education, which has been a big issue recently as we've had more migrant families and lots more English-language learners enrolling in lots of different schools, many of them that, which don't actually have bilingual programs set up. So given those shortages, what policies do you support to recruit more teachers, including teachers of color and educators in hard-to-staff fields such as special education? And Ellen, we will start with you.
Okay. So this is a really big issue. We need to retain the good teachers that we have. How are we going to do that? We have to look at burnout, you know? We need good teacher mentoring programs. I was a teacher. I taught in an under-resourced school. It's exhausting, and a lot is asked of you as that teacher. We need to give the teachers supports so that they want to stay in Chicago Public Schools. We need to make sure that Chicago Public Schools is a place that people want to work. So what does that mean? It means partnering with the city, affordable housing, good public transportation, all of those things. In addition, in terms of English-language learners, we need more dual-language academies in Chicago Public Schools, and we need to make it easier to become a dual-language academy. It would be also nice to It would be also nice to take our current base of teachers and make it easier for them to become certified to be bilingual teachers. You're right, the city needs it. We've had an influx of English language learners, and we need to meet those needs for all of the teachers, for all the students. In addition to that, we need to increase parent programming so that parents understand what is being required, so parents start to learn the language. So better mentoring programs, better supports for teachers, probably goes back to the budget issue. How can we afford to pay more social workers and more student supports in the buildings so that teachers don't feel so burnt out?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Andrew?
I think that the, the way to fill in where the vacancies is to support strong principles. Teachers want to work in environments where they're well-supported, and so I think strong principles and strong support for those principles is the first step towards creating opportunities for teachers who themselves can feel supported and want to continue in their job rather than either moving to another district or quitting the profession altogether. In terms of incentives, I think that the, I mean, Chicago teachers are well-paid, Illinois teachers are well-paid, better, $10,000 a year on average, more than they make in Indiana. So you'd think that thinking people in Indiana might move here. That notwithstanding, I'm, I'm not opposed to paying teachers more. In every, it's odd, in so many situations, whether it's government or business, there's never a CEO shortage. And if a million dollars won't land a CTO, a CEO, then $2 million will. And, and yet, whenever people start talking about the guys who actually tighten the bolts or teach the kids to read, there's somehow a shortage, and, and maybe it's just a lack of resources that are being offered to attract the right people to, to fill the job. So I'm not opposed to CPS teachers getting paid more. I also think that one thing that we could do is that we could offer, as an incentive for more teachers to come in and new teachers to come in, would be simply to help them with their student loans. Student loan debt is a huge problem. It's something that I worked with very closely when I ran the state's Student Assistance Commission, and we ought to be able to help them pay those loans off early, give them interest rate subsidies, and even forgiveness to attract the right people into our system.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
So when 50 schools closed, we lost a huge pool of talented black teachers. And a lot of that was in under-invested schools, and I think that people look at that situation, because you were asking about, you know, recruiting teachers of color in particular, I think people look at that situation and think, you know, this isn't, this isn't a system for me, or this isn't something I want to go into if you're a young person. So I think that one step is to make sure that we are really, you know, investing in those schools and building them up again to where their environments, where at least the students and teachers that are in them feel like, yes, teaching, teaching is valued here and supported. I think in general, supporting teachers is, is just so important. If we're talking about recruiting, you know, young people who are students now in high school to decide to become teachers, well, they need to see it as a viable profession, as a profession filled with joy, right? It's a profession where you can feel like you're making a difference. So we need supports for teachers so that they, they truly feel that way. I do think that, that a lot of it is making sure that principals are able to support teachers. That's a big part of that job, but principals get pulled to do so many other things that, you know, are not that. And so we, as the board, can be asking principals, well, what do you need for support so that you can spend more time on teacher development? There are some programs for recruiting, in particular, teachers of color. So Grow Your Own is one such program. It's a scholarship program that encourages people from the community, maybe people who are SICA's, to go into teaching, and I've seen it be amazing, and some great people have become teachers. CTU has a program called We Care that supports beginning teachers, because it's really hard in those first few years. That's a time where a lot of people decide, you know, this is not for me. So I just think all those supports are really, really important.
And just to, you mentioned SICA's, and those are paraprofessionals who work with, oh, no, that's okay.
Right, so they, they work with special needs students in the schools.
Thank you, thank you. Kimberly?
My mom was told when she was in high school, when she said to her guidance counselor she wanted to be a teacher, they said that was not a good idea, so she didn't pursue it. She became a physical therapy assistant. And when we were in high school, she wanted to pursue her dream of being a teacher. She went back to school, got the required master's degree in addition to all her other education that she had been doing, and started working in the public school systems, Proviso, Lyons Township, with, I don't, maybe a dollar a kid to do, like, really, home economics, which is a very broad category. Actually, the amount of debt she had to take on to get the required degrees, when my mom raised four kids, worked two jobs, and could run a household, and figured out how to make us all have an experience that did not feel as poor as we probably were, is a degree in and of itself. And so, I mean, yes and, we have bureaucracy that's stopping smart people from becoming teachers. And there is a bit of American exceptionalism in that. Every other country has amazing smart people that natively speak other languages, and it is almost impossible for them to be certified to teach here. I'm an adjunct professor. One, I love teaching adults, but two, I can't teach in a public school. It's not flexible. I have little kids I have to get to school to, and I would have to go and spend more money that I don't have. There are people that we have from Latin American countries that are teachers that cannot work here today. We don't have to train current teachers to speak Spanish. We have Spanish teachers that cannot teach in classrooms because we have put up bureaucratic walls for no reason. Now, that's not to diminish the profession of teaching and the Illinois standards, but if we need to fast-track adults in the classroom, and we had a student tell us at one of our forums, three hours in a classroom with no teacher? It's criminal. We have teachers, parents, dropping our kids off at school that have educational degrees and experience in other countries that cannot teach and they want to. We need to get rid of the bureaucracy and common sense approaches, and if we need to fast-track a modern-day licensure that our state wants, then we can do that in parallel. But we have smart people that want to teach right now, and we need to get out of our own way and have them in the classroom, and address the debt that a lot of people don't have to pay for the additional education required.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, that's my perfect segue into talking about fast-track. So in Chicago Public, in the city of Chicago, we have a residency program for second-career adults who want to become teachers in Chicago Public Schools and elsewhere. So I have the privilege of teaching in that program. We have plenty of SICA's, we have retired adults from other fields, paraprofessionals, classroom aides, who are in my classroom, who are getting a degree, and in a year and a half, will be full-time teachers. They are paid through grants and donations. They do earn a CPS salary at a lower paycheck, but they do get benefits, and they are also members of the Chicago Teachers Union. I am so proud of this program. I can't tell you how proud I am of this program. But another part of the question, I think I heard, was about how to support our dual-language and multilingual students in the classroom. Is that correct?
Bilingual education.
Bilingual education, yes. And so a little bit, you touched on this a little bit too, Kim. It's, again, it's always, it comes at the price tag, like, what is it going to cost? We have parents and caregivers that could volunteer their services, who speak other languages, to be in the classroom along with teachers. Again, there are some bureaucracies around that in Chicago Public, but we need somebody to navigate that. And we do have schools that have been able to pay parents to be lunchroom assistants, classroom assistants, it's possible. But again, I need strong leaders, talk about strong leaders as our principals, to open up their doors and say, what can you give to support the children in our building and in our community? And we have it. We just have to tap into it.
Okay. Thomas?
Yeah, Reema, your question touches on two evolving crises that the Chicago Public School System is confronting right now. Number one, we have 52,000 students, about 15% of our student body, who right now have IEPs. We have legal obligation to provide that special ed support. That we have been seemingly unable to do that, I think is probably downstream, certainly downstream, from the budget challenges that we are having. We need to make some very tough choices to correct our budget and balance our budget so that we can provide our special ed kids the support that not only, that we morally need to provide, but we legally need to provide as well. As I think everybody is aware, we have had an extraordinary influx of migrant students entering into the Chicago Public School System. These kids need to be supportive. Almost all of them speak very little English. So right now, and I have observed this as an occasional sub at Tubman Elementary in Lakeview, right now, we have teachers speaking into Google Translate and then handing it to the child. That's totally unacceptable. We cannot tolerate that. And this has been a, a challenge that has found its way, I've observed, into the current academic year. Of course, we confronted it last academic year, it does not appear that we have developed much of a strategy to confront in the current academic year. Let me echo what Ms. Brown and Dr. Giosa have mentioned. We need to look at getting more fluent Spanish-speaking teachers, even who may not be meeting the credentials of becoming a licensed teacher, and streamlining these licensing procedures, making sure that we get the folks who support these kids into the school and cutting through bureaucratic red tape.
Okay. That is actually all the time that we have. I can't tell you, there are a million other questions on this sheet that I have that I can't ask, but thank you so much, all of you, for joining us today, and we appreciate for, you know, you all taking the time to come out here. And thank you for tuning in to Chalkbeat's inaugural School Board Candidate Forums to learn more about the people running in Chicago's historic school board elections. You can find our voter guides and additional resources at chalkbeat.org/Chicago. Thank you again to our partners at Block Club Chicago, WBEZ, and the Chicago Sun-Times for working with us to develop the voter guides. Special thanks to Tiana Van Gundy at Fueled Events for planning and hosting these forums. Thank you to our audiovisual team, BPM Film and Company for production support. Also, thanks to our engagement team at Chalkbeat, especially Carolyn Bowman and Iba Hamid Rivera, and to the team at the Chalkbeat Chicago Bureau. Our managing editors are Eric Gorski and Carrie Malago. Our editor-in-chief is Sarah Darville. For Chalkbeat Chicago, I'm Reema Amin. Have a great day and happy voting.